Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. All rise for pleasure allegiance.
Pleased to be with you.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it has one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. I guess our warm weather's totally over and it's gonna be really cold coming up here soon. So, I guess get used to it. It's winter. The first items on the agenda are the homeowners associations. Promontory Point, anyone here from Promontory Point? Deerwood Estates?
Yes.
And Woodbine? Pardon?
I'm from Deerwood Estates.
Oh, hi. Who's from Deerwood Estates?
It's Mitchell Cruzel. I'm the secretary on the board.
Ah, Mitchell, thank you for joining. Do you have anything to bring to our attention?
Not presently, no.
Not presently, okay. Well, thank you for volunteering for your HOA. We appreciate it. Thank you for being present tonight. What about Woodbine Craig Smith or? All right, then if there's no HOAs here, we will move to the, to public comment. Let's see. Ben, go ahead. Benjamin, go ahead.
I was just giving update as far as downtown. As you can see, obviously, hopefully everyone to watch the movie this last weekend with Mario. It's been great response, great PR. Overall business in the downtown, we are up through our track in around almost fifty percent from year over last year. So, it's been a big positive impact. We actually have two people getting engaged this Saturday in town on our carriage ride. So, again, just exposure to the town is, is really showing cases nice out there. So, just that all of us coming together to make it work, whether it's the streetscapes, the business owners, the property owners, all together, it's been a good progression, like ten years.
Yes, and downtown looks fabulous.
Every year it's getting better and better.
More than nice, gentle. Looks great.
If you want to come out, just, just because they just wanna see it. So, I think if everything combined, it's been.
Oh, yeah. The buzz, the energy is great. I was there on shopping today.
Can I ask a question? Like, do you represent the business group, Governor?
Yeah, somebody.
Have my business as well to the president. Is there a name on this or something like that that I can share with my HOA that you guys?
We can, after I can give you my contact for our topic.
Well, great. Well, thank you for being here and thanks for sharing the good news that the revenues are up for the downtown and you know that by the envelopes that you got, right? What is it, a hundred fifty dollars?
A hundred fifty dollars gives the consumer a free guest at the visitor center. So, it's a way to see how doing is a attractive.
Good.
And you're responsible for history movies.
And they're doing phenomenal as well.
And they look nice. And they make that movie look great.
I have a question for anybody who can answer it. Is it possible to watch that movie without some kind of paid subscription?
I can get back to you that off the topic. I, there's a director's cut out there. I just gotta find out if I can ensure that another movie then. I'll direct the Chris and we can see you guys. You guys gonna watch it?
Do you have cable?
No.
Oh, you don't, okay.
That's the cord you're using.
Got it. Because it is on the Great American Christmas Channel.
Maybe, maybe they could show it on the green this summer.
We are, so the plan is, is we have a Christmas event July. Mario will come out, sign autographs, and that will showcase.
That's great.
So, that is the game plan. By then we'll do it.
It's a mixed season as well. We grow the field. So, we can search outside and inside.
Okay, that's great.
Knowing most of the weather's gonna be, we had to hear of it and then try to post a month time would've been a little. So, that will be the plan for July.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Benjamin?
I have three questions for the board. The first question is, what the status of forty-three, fifty-nine, Illinois twenty-two, if there's been any update?
Let's stop there. We'll answer them one at a time.
We did receive a application submittal. We have not reviewed it yet to, to see if it's complete. So, it's in the queue right now with village reviews. But, yes, we did receive a revised application.
Do you, and how long I might take to review said application?
The holidays and some other projects we're reviewing, probably thirty to sixty days.
Oh, okay. So, probably the earliest would be in January then.
Yeah.
The second question I have was about the military expansion and, you know, cost of overall, but my guess is that's gonna be answered by point number twelve and the warrant issue. I believe at the time was thirty thousand overage or something like that. My third question is, on the corner of twenty-two and Old McHenry Road, that would be a little north of it, there's like this old abandoned camp or whatever it was.
Chase Camp.
Yes. Well, now, similar to what's happening to the old DS Industries property, the thing is covered in graffiti. It's, it's deteriorating quite badly now. It's, luckily it's covered by trees. So, is it an immediate danger to us? Probably not right now, but, you know, for Long Grove, I don't understand why we're having all these properties look like garbage and, you know, why they're allowed to have, this is completely covered in graffiti. It looks quite bad. It hasn't been maintained in some time. I mean, at this stage, the concept is possible to be demolished.
Well, let me, let me stop you there because what happened is that there is somebody, they're a Hawthorne Woods resident, and they have approached us about turning that into a canine facility. And they are, I don't know if they've submitted any paperwork yet, but they.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have. Yeah, so, but they haven't?
They have not submitted yet. They're working with IDOT on curb cuts.
Oh.
So, the plan is that they're actively trying to preserve those buildings and they're buying that property out to turn it into a, you know, a canine type recreational facility.
Okay. I mean, that's why I'm good. And, you know, I certainly support that. Whatever wants to go there, but in the short run, you know, we just can't have buildings there that look, they're covered in graffiti and it looks really bad.
The one reason I would want Home Rule would be no taxes, but the ability to do a vacancy tax on properties like that. But, we don't have all of the tools we'd love to have.
Yeah. I understand this limitation, but at the same time, for a property like this to, that's in the heart of our village, that's something about, you know, people should be able to maintain a property in a relatively decent way. I'm not saying it has to be beautiful, but I think having graffiti covered things and things like that is not appropriate for our village. I hope I'm not holding the standard too high. Uh, thank you.
Yep. No, I agree with you. I'm not gonna argue with you.
We haven't heard anything on that one specifically in the wild, so we can check in with the owner on it and ask what they've done and what they need from us. Have you heard anything from Jay's Camps for the property? Have they gotten those reports or anything or?
I haven't heard of anything at Jay's Camps and I, I work at.
I can tell you they're not on the call list, so they haven't been.
Yeah.
Yep. Almost every night. Yep.
Well, this is the first the village has heard of all on it, so we can check in.
Yeah.
If we can do that.
I mean, there are so many trees in front of it. At least the skies. In the summertime, it might be tough to see, but now this time of year, it's pretty obvious.
Yep. Well, there's somebody very interested in it and let's hope that that goes through. Other comments?
I've seen, obviously, the president, Country Club Meadows, homeowners association. I'm here, I'm asking for our homeowners, that we've been working with flock cameras, you know, for a long time. I would like for twenty twenty-five to be our turnaround year, if we can get these on the docket. You know, at, at our last meeting when the sheriff was there, I asked him, you know, how many cameras. He couldn't even tell me how many thousands of cameras were in Lake County. It's a no cost to the village. It's, it's a no, I know there's privacy issues and stuff like that. There is a, you know, is there any, I, I was asked, I was asked the board, is there any cameras out there that are being used in the village for village use or is all the cameras out there being used for public people use right now? If you, we, as, as Long Grove, does Long Grove have any cameras out there that they're using for anything? Well, I mean, you don't have to be specific about things, but for traffic or anything like that right now?
No, we don't have any. No.
So, you know, if, if, you know, there's a, if, you know, we're all, we're all worried about being videotaped and everything else like that. Does anybody travel between, between Shaker and Arlington Road on Checker?
Yep.
You know you guys are being videotaped every both ways by a private camera there. And it's not being, it's not, it's not, you know, being, you know, told to anybody there, okay? So, if the village is, is sanctuizing that, you know, I mean, you should have a thing up there, you're being videotaped, you know, just like a red light camera, anything else like that, you know what I mean? We're trying to do flock cameras and a resident installed a camera, you know, where your speed bumps were. And I don't know if you've guys seen it, but he, he erected a camera out there in both ways. Have you seen it? You know, and is that, is that something that we can do then if we can't get the flock cameras? Because you said we couldn't do them on our private roads with that. Our public roads, but that's a public road. So, our residents are willing to put a camera on the, on the front of their property, you know, and videotape. Now, we're just looking to license plate cameras. We're not looking to videotape. And, and we, we let go of all our rights to the videotapes to the sheriff, you know, you know, with our agreement. So, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of lost here and some of the residents are lost here on how somebody could put a camera up there and videotape our cars going by there every day and, and, you know, like, what are you doing with their footage?
Yeah, the issue with that is it's on private property. So, we inspected it and it's not in the village right away, which is different. And there's, we have no legal way to stop. It's like having a Ring doorbell camera that can videotape the streets. It's.
So, what you're saying is that if, if the resident puts it on his private property and doesn't use it for his driving, in physical, he uses it for going up and down the street. Okay, it is okay. I mean, I think that's sort of gonna be a nuisance.
It's mainly, you know, part of, you know, right, expectation of privacy, they call it, if you're on a public street.
Yeah.
You have no expectation.
Well, correct. I mean, we're just looking to, you know, make Long Grove a better community. And, and, you know, the more things we have in place to, for security and stuff like that, the less, you know, I mean, you know, the less I think we're gonna have, you know what I mean? But, I don't think you want neighbors or whatever putting, you know, and the neighbors that were gonna put these cameras up in their, on their properties, okay? I mean, they'll put them right past the right of way and then they're gonna be like a nuisance. It's gonna be like a, it's gonna look like an arm hanging out like that. And I don't think, I don't think that, you know, the village doesn't want that, I don't think.
It's not, to me, it's not a matter of a, I'm sorry, may I speak?
Yeah, please.
It's not a matter of a black light bulb. And it's, and it's aesthetic. It's a Fourth Amendment issue. As soon as the government gets involved in surveilling people, that's when it violates the Constitution. That's the issue. So, if people wanna put them on their, their own lots and shoot across the street, at the street, on the street, I have absolutely no issue with that. But, as soon as a government body starts to surveil the residents, it's a Fourth Amendment Constitution violation that I rose my, lift, raised my hand and swore to uphold. So, again, if you guys wanna put all the cameras up on each of your driveways, go for it. Knock your socks off. But, to me, the second you put it on a public right of way, the government's involved in surveilling the citizens. And to me, that's worth amendment.
Well, I, I understand it too, but, you know, you go, you live in the county and you travel everywhere. You get video, you get, you're licensed plate read everywhere you go, okay? And, I mean, if, if you're that concerned about getting your license plate read there, we're warning you, don't come through our subdivision. You don't, you know, I mean, we're the southern part of Long Grove. Maybe we're forgotten about, you know what I mean?
No. The, the line is, the line is not we. The line is when the government does.
Yeah.
That's the line. If private citizens wanna shoot across the driveways, knock your socks off. Go for it.
Let me ask.
All I, all I'm asking for is to get us on the docket and, and try to put it up for vote. I, I don't understand, you know, I understand you're part of it, but I, I think that, you know, this is twenty twenty-five, you know?
So, what's your, what's your counterargument to that? It, the Fourth Amendment and the Constitution are very clear.
I wanted to.
The government shouldn't surveil the citizens.
Okay.
So, how do you get around it?
But, but how does Buffalo Grove and Lake County Sheriff knew that right now?
They don't care.
They don't care.
They don't care.
Let me, let me interject here. So, I just wanna go, just, we don't have the full board here.
Yeah, I don't know.
Let me, let me ask, and would you be agreeable to, to looking at this again and putting it before the board?
I would, I would be agreeable to having another conversation if we've got a very good, robust conversation, including the sheriff.
Okay. Matt, would you?
I do not support flock cameras. The exact reason the trustee O'Connor stated.
Okay. Rita?
I'm not opposed to them. I, my perspective is, you're right. I get, I get. I go through tobers. You know, I think on my license plate. And it's everywhere. And, and I see the good in it, you know, if it helps law enforcement or crimes, violence, whatever. And, and more importantly, if the people in the neighborhood feel better, you know, there's a certain amount of peace that I wouldn't necessarily like to take that away from them. We have private subdivisions here that have cameras.
Yeah, and we're, you know, half private, half public.
We just, literally, we just did it too. So, we just, we have two of them that are on our subdivision. So, but let me, let me do this. So.
I lean with them though.
You do.
This is the government, it's not the village. You were asking for the ability to do this 'cause it's on the right of way.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's putting the camera on, on the right of way.
On village property, right.
On the property. And that's when it crosses the line there.
So, let's, let's do, so, Chris, is there a way to get whatever needs to be put together so that we can get this on the agenda? Well, I don't know what we need from them to do it. It was partially done, but it was never completed.
Yeah, I think you've given me.
Yeah, we, you know, I need to tell the sheriff, you know, both the sheriff and everything else like that because, you know, we gave, you know, we're gonna pay for this thing a hundred percent. It's just no cost. And I, I think, I think it just makes Long Grove a more exceptional community, you know what I'm saying? You know, to have some, you know, a good sense of security, even though it's just a sense of security. But, I understand your Fourth Amendment rights and stuff like that, but, you know, there's no place, there's no place you can go. You, you were, you were just mentioning, you mentioned you were on vacation.
Doesn't matter.
You were mentioning you were on vacation. You were videotaped everywhere where you were on vacation this time.
Fully, fully understand that. I just don't wanna propagate that. I think it's a Fourth Amendment violation.
But, we're not propagating it because we're, we're not gonna use it for anything and we're gonna, the Lake County Sheriff is the only person that can.
Could I add something to your list of, of requests? If there is a contract in place between Country Club Estates or Meadows?
Meadows.
And the sheriff, can we get a copy of that contract? And then furthermore, is there's a contract in place between the county sheriff and Flock on the data disposition and retention and ownership? Can we get a copy of that? Because that, that's really the issue. It's not about taking a picture of cars. It's about what they do with the data and who has the ability to capture that data, use the data, sell that data, mine that data, or, you know, or dispose of that data at their discretion. So, if those contracts exist, I think it's a little long way to settling my concern about the new ownership.
And I, I think, I think we have those contracts. I think they were in that packet, you know, from last year.
We've never, we've never seen them.
Well, they've been presented to the, to the village, but, you know, like, I, we, you know, like, I know that you were worried about them keeping it forever, ever. I mean, you know, we maybe need to go, you know, what do you need to go, thirty days?
No, I need to go like three seconds to check to see if the car's on the bad list. And if it's not, delete the data.
Yeah.
That's it. It's.
You know, I mean, that would be up to the sheriff, but, you know, we had that agreement and they, they, you know, Flock, it didn't.
See, that's, that's the thing. It's not up to the sheriff. If we.
Can we put this on a, as a.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna probably have to stop it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get, I'll, I'll, if we can get it on the docket for twenty minutes, I, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your support and thank you for the great job you guys are doing.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Thanks for what you do too. So, all right, any other public comment? Nobody? Okay. Uh, how about the public safety report?
I have some homework to do. Nothing really significant. Last month, the, the only thing that happened is close to the Country Club Estates, again, it's kinda been stagnant for six, eight months, but, but another incident of a car driving down Checker Road and stopping and shooting into the forest reserve area. It sounded like an automatic weapon. Deputy got there and did not find any shell casings on the street. I, I, sorry, Chris. We've got a couple different ones around the county, but were there shell casings found? No, that's right. So, shell casings probably landed inside the car. So, we had video surveillance for some, it's on Checker Road. And the, the car did have any license plate on it as it drove by. So, we weren't able to get that license plate information of some identified , identified information.
Did that happen elsewhere?
Yes.
Did you ever catch the people?
So, you remember last year, two years ago off of Cuba Road?
Yes.
We collected, I think, hundreds of shell casings and we sent those to the crime lab. And we were able to match the shell casings with a gun that's been used all around the state, but we didn't find a person attached to it. So, you know, unless you're sitting right there.
But, no, there's another part to the story, Keith. Basically, they were able to match the shell casings to somebody that was brought up on charges in the city of Chicago. So, they caught this person, but our state's attorney refused to prosecute him because you could tie that gun back and that individual back to what happened here. And our state's attorney decided not to file charges. They, it was too circumstantial. But, they did, they did tie it to somebody who was arrested in the city of Chicago. I have no idea if they're out on bail or where they're at, but they, they did, you know, we, I guess our state's attorney refused to prosecute him.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nope, no, I'm aware of that one. I was, I was, that was another one that was very concerning too. Yeah.
But, it, it does happen around the county and in the, the north end of the county, people shooting forest reserves from the street, which is odd. It's the only, the only thing that we can come up is target practice.
At nighttime?
Yeah.
So, so the good news, the good news is, is that, that, that location off of Cuba, right, there's been no incidents since that person was arrested. So, but I don't know any more than that, right? So, yeah.
It's just odd.
Yep.
That's all.
Thank you.
Question for Keith. Now, in, there's a lot of drones that are being sighted in New Jersey and California and people trying to, to get and understand what they are. I think there's a call in New Jersey to put in a temporary state of emergency and ground all drones. Does Lake County Sheriff have anything in place in case we get kind of the drone invasion here, whether it be human or other devices that are driving them?
No, we don't. Um, but the, the drones are.
Something I need to talk about.
Kind of overwatched by the FAA. So, like, the drones that the sheriff's office has, every time we go to launch one of those, we have to call the FAA and let them know and be cleared.
Okay. Yeah, I think Jersey seems to have trouble right now figuring out what's flying in their skies.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Something, something I need to.
Tongue in cheek, it was last meeting of your question, you know?
If it is. If it's nefarious.
I'd stop you cover.
I know, right?
If it's nefarious, it's a sentence, they're not gonna follow the FAA.
Yeah, if it is, I'm not sure.
They're not fly that high.
All right. Thank you for your report. And let's move then to consent agenda. There's a few items on it, and if anyone wants anything pulled, let me know, but I'll just go through them. Approval of the November twenty twenty-four bill warrant. Will the regular board meeting minutes from the November twenty-sixth meeting, subject to non-substantive revisions. Approval of the executive session board meeting minutes from the November twenty-sixth twenty twenty-four meeting, same thing. Approval of an ordinance adopting the tax levy for the village of Long Grove Special Service Area, SSA number two, Long Grove Commons, Northwest Corner of Route twenty-two and Old McHenry Road. Approval of an ordinance adopting the tax levy for the village of Long Grove Special Service Area, SSA number three, Downtown Historic Business District for the promotion of tourism and economic development activities. Approval of an ordinance adopting the tax levy for the village of Long Grove Special Area, SSA number four, Illinois eighty-three Properties Deepwell Water System. Number eleven, approval of an ordinance adopting the tax levy for the village of Long Grove Special Service Area, SSA number six, Downtown Long Grove Old McHenry Public Water. And then the last one was approval of resolution, approving and authorizing execution of a change order for the Village Hall Expansion Project.
We've got it all up together.
So, somebody wanna make a motion to approve? Okay, moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by.
Second.
By trustee Tanucci. It's a roll call. Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee Barowski?
Aye.
Trustee Chris Martin?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Presentation and acceptance of the twenty twenty-four Village of Long Grove Audit by Sickich. Oh, are you presenting it?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, no, by, by the microphone, otherwise we can't, we can't hear you. I don't, I, you were here last year too, 'cause you're really tall. Yeah. That's true that I. You are. You're really tall. So, you, you're, you're Thomas, right?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah.
So, good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking the time tonight to review the audit results. And my name is Tom Swicki, Director of Sickich for the auditors in the Village of Long Grove in twenty twenty-four. Basically, you're in. Let's just thank you, Tim, that we all be assistants we got during the process. And we can tend to ask for a lot of information. Appreciate all the help that we get throughout the audit.
Oh, Tim over here? Yeah. Well, Tim, introduce yourself, would you? Yeah. But, he's on the, I mean, he's on the agenda too, right?
Later.
Yeah, later. Okay, yeah. Tim, go ahead.
That's what I thought. So.
I do.
Okay.
Tim Gavin, Finance Director. Please, you're on our back in a minute.
We contract with them.
Last year at, at budget time, we said we have to have somebody on staff. We should do that.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Chris, time to drag him to a meeting. Nice to be here.
Okay, so you're going to, how are we gonna do this? How, do you wanna say anything? Because this is your.
No, I do not, actually. You know, if, if, Sickich has been doing this for a couple of years. Last year, we introduced the first management discussion. We now have a full audit. Like, like, things feel smooth. I didn't even comment, hardly so. I walked, I went through the letter.
I read it.
Ily. I did fall asleep. I was on an airplane.
Yeah.
And then I woke up.
I just traveled so much. But, no, I, I read the whole, I read the letter, the management discussion, 'cause that's really. So, you know, I had a couple of things on that, but, no, it's been very smooth. Thank you.
Yeah, basically, what I'm gonna do tonight is just kinda go through, on a, at a high level, the reports that we issued this year as part of the audit. So, we have three reports that should hopefully be in front of you. Person's annual financial report, I refer to the audit report. The second is the auditor's communication to the village board. And then the last one is the financial filing report. And that's really good there for easier submission to the Capitol's office. So, I'm gonna start with the annual financial report, just kinda go through the, the, here. Obviously, if you'd like to follow along. So, on page one, here's our independent auditor's report. As part of our audit, we follow two sets of standards, probably generally accepted auditing standards. And then the reporting department. So, the fourth of that is issued what we call unmodified opinion of the financial statements. It's also known as clean audit opinion. And it's the highest level of assurance we can provide for the financial statements are free material in the statement. After the independent auditor's report, starting on the BNA page one, as we were briefly discussing just a minute ago, this is the management discussion and analysis. That's the other report. We just have that being described, management discusses and analyzes financial information. So, that's the fourth. The good thing about the BNA section here is that it not only takes the current year information, but compares to the prior year and provides explanation for why the global balance may have changed from the prior year. So, good context to the numbers here. I would, I would say, encourage you to read this. If you don't have anything else, you can read number four. I encourage you to at least read through the.
If I might interject, that's, that's the one that's, that's the one that takes on the content, talking about why things happen. Most of the rest of the audit is what happens. This is a little bit about why.
Exactly. Yep. So, I'll leave that for you to read. Past that, beginning of page four, we start with the basic financial statements of the audit report. So, page four is on the position, basically, the balance sheet, ongoing accounting.
Wide schedule.
Includes all the financial information you've received, but also includes long-term activities, applicable assets, and your long-term life operations. Pages five and six are your six activity, basically, income statements for a given activity, wide level. Basically, this shows how your net position changed from the prior year. So, the, on the bottom of page six, you can see the village wide has the, has a wish of about three point four, three point five million dollars from last year. Looking past that, on page seven and eight, start with the fund management business, the government on the credit sheet, broken up into columns for your major funds, and then point aggregate and non-major columns. Look at your general fund here on the left-hand side, on the bottom of page eight, in the fund balance.
Sorry.
Bottom of page eight will be the fund balance for the general fund. The unmodified balance there is about three million dollars. I compare that to your fund balance policy. The fund balance policy of the village is to have a hundred percent of budgeted expenditure The fund balance policy of the village is to have 100% of budgeted expenditure in the general fund. 8.3 million represents about 200%. You're well above the minimum fund balance policy there. You see that number just looking at a real basis and what you're going to utilize those fund balances.
It's the line of the fund.
Fund balance amount, yep. Pages 10 and 11, basically, you can see this for your general fund. Again, looking at the general fund, your main operating fund there. The bottom of page 11, you see the general fund's fund balance increased by about $1.16 in income from last year. Real quickly, looking at downtown TIP funds here as well. Downtown TIP funds, fund balance increased by about $700, $2,000 from last year. That's the one that had sort of large fund deficit. So last year was about $7.9 million, now to about $7.2 million. Quick, all their schedules on the front, real quickly here. Flip back in the back of the report, page 43. This is the general fund budget and actual report. So your budget versus actual reports, a really good measure to look at how your funds performed versus how you budgeted for those funds. So your general funds here, you'll see, we talked about earlier, about $1.6 million increase to its fund balance. Go through the columns to the left of it, you can see how you budgeted for it, about a $789,000 increase. So really, the fund actually outperformed your budget by about $800,000. And the last good book to point out is page 47 and 48. Page 47 and 48, you have the net pension liability from the Illinois Retirement Fund. It defines the pension plan for the employees of the village. So looking at the 2023 column, which is the most current information available, see the net pension liability decrease from last year from about $713,000 to about $580,000 there. Key number to look at though is on page 48, how is that percentage there, 80%? That's the funded status of the IMRF plan. So IMRF is one of the best-funded plans in the state, so no concerns there with a funding perspective for the IMRF plan for the village employees.
Just so you know, we have very little control.
Exactly.
We have to, it's not much that we manage.
But it's, it's any employee that's worked here, right?
Right.
Is tied to this, that's under the tension.
Right, the only thing we could control would be to hire all sorts of people who don't need retirement for some reason, but we really don't have much to control here.
Right.
But we must monitor and improve that.
Yep, and then you get a, you're required to contribute a certain percentage that they actuary's charged based on...
So how do you read this for the, you know, that we're incurring here? Where do you see that in this line?
Sorry?
What risk are we incurring, if anything, by writing, reading this? How can I tell if we're at risk?
So the bottom number on the schedule on page 47, the net pension liability.
Right.
So that number represents as of today, the present value of what you owe to retirees when they retire, versus how it should be currently contributed, and then, you know, account for all their other assumptions, like how much you're going to return on investments, things like that. That's the current day liability right now. So the number below that, on page 48, is the funding percentage of that plan, which is 80% funded. That's the present value as of 4/24. So what happens is then the actuary for the plan will look at that and say, here's how much you have to contribute to the plan in actual 25. That's all the contributions that are determined, based on how it's currently funded, and then looking at their assumptions in the plan going forward as well.
I'm just, their assumptions on how the plan is going to perform makes no sense to me whatsoever, but we haven't, they don't.
Yeah, but so our liability is like $580,000 this year. That present valuable liability.
The liability is based on their assumptions.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, wrapping out.
It's not like a hard liability, like you get to cut a check for $580,000. It's just as of today, the present value of what you would owe in the future for the retirees is that. And that number fluctuates on a year-by-year basis.
Quite a bit.
Yeah, exactly. A lot of that, a couple of years ago, in 22, when the market conditions were really, really down, that really drove that liability number up a lot. It was at 21 compared to 22. I'm sure 21 might have been an asset, so, not quite. Okay. But it really drives that, drives that number. When they're assuming like a 7.25% return on the investment, you actually have investment loss, this is a factor that really fluctuates that.
Okay.
And also, in the case of the village, small, what might seem like a small personnel change can actually have a much larger impact based on lower head count. Each change is going to have a more dramatic impact, so, you know, that's, I think that's part of the picture as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And those are the high-level items I wanted to review the audit for. Real quickly, just point out what's included in these, the board reports here, the other separate documents that you have in front of you. Actually, there's a couple of purposes. The first is a required communication from us as auditors to the government, we call it our staff management letter, which is discuss with a variety of matters. Required to communicate before, under our audit. They also include any adjusting journal entries we identified during our audit process. We only have six this year, which is good. I mean, we weren't adjusting our cell balances a lot during the audit process. They were really shaken initially. And the last piece of information included in this document, we call it management letter, that's where we look for the deficiencies in the control or the other recommendations we have for improvement at the village. This year, we only have two comments here, and they're actually comments that the village requested we put in there last year. So the first one relates to the water fund. The water fund has personally been operating loss this year, and has for the last couple of years, I believe. So just looking at that on a go-forward basis, determining how you're going to address that operating loss in the water fund, whether that's addressing the rates, onboarding new users, kind of our system, reducing costs, however you want to handle that. But just look at that on a go-forward basis. The other one, very minor one, is you just reviewing last week's, how, and with that, those were really all the areas I had to discuss with the auditors this year, and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions?
Just working with staff, how was that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's always a pleasure to work with here at the village. Really appreciate all the assistance from everybody. Debbie's our main contact during the audit process, so she does a really nice job. I know Chris is one of your older ones, I believe, on the audit process this year, and the team came in this year as well. So everything went really, really smoothly, though, so really always appreciate all the help we get here.
Okay, close to here. Is there anything we should know that you think that we should have additional resources or anything like that to make it better for the staff?
Hold on a second, I didn't close my ears.
No, it's the staff.
Oh, okay.
In a good audit committee, you can send them all away and just talk to the auditor.
I'm looking at specifically that comes to mind. I think the fact that you have a finance director now certainly helps keep the finances in the proper place, and then being able to review and ensure that, you know, the policies in place at the village are... As of right now, none of the specifics.
I don't have anything, do you have anything?
What is the water fund? Is that like community water?
Yes.
There's a couple of water funds, but the main water fund is one for the deep well that's over behind Sunset.
Yeah, we're, we're operating at a loss, and we've chosen to do that, so.
Yeah, we have a capital one, and then the operating, that one's at a loss. We need more customers to cover this fixed overhead.
Oh, that's a good question. Is $580,000 pension funding liability? I understand that has to do with the performance of the investments and who comes on board and so forth. If we wanted, you know, we were humming two or three years ago, we were 95, 97%. So that, with these numbers, is that a result of the investments that haven't performed as, as we thought? I know it's, I know it's inscrutable based on what you were saying.
No, we, it's, no, it's, it's...
That's all it is.
Staff who qualify or don't qualify.
Okay.
If, yeah, if I, I can point out, there's a lot of details that kind of get lost in the, in the, in the mess here, but there's two sections on that page. The top section shows benefit payments, and they were kind of running steady, $45,000, $46,000, up to about $55,000 in 2020. 2021 jumped up to $140,000, then $150,000. So this is retirees. That had probably the, in addition to the investment income, the largest impact on the total liability, because everyone who works here under IMRF is slowly building to their ultimate retirement, which is going to be, you know, an impact on what it's going to be owed.
I see, okay.
You can see Jim retired, Sherry retired.
Yes, yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Jim, thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
You, too, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't know who's going to talk about this one, but we're going to be losing Sidler, right? So, Sidler, who does our payroll and everything like that, all our accounting.
When you said Debbie, that was, that's Debbie with Sidler.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, I guess they're going out of business, right? He's retiring, right? So, so this is approval, a change of a payroll service provider. Chris, do you want to introduce this topic?
Sure, so there's, one is in talking with Greg, we decided that the logical first step would be to transition off the payroll.
Greg from Sidler.
Sorry, Greg from Sidler.
Okay.
It would maintain Debbie. Debbie doesn't do the payroll, so this is, they have other staff there doing this. And the QuickBooks desktop version that we currently use is going end of life, so we're being forced to have a new software change, no matter what, or a change in vendor for that. So we looked at two different options. One was strong pay, and the other one is Lauer Bachman provides payroll services. They have a payroll team and their own software that Tim can talk about in a minute. This also provides an opportunity for some much-needed modernization. We currently even Excel spreadsheets to log and track our time. We have no accrual tracking method, or paperless onboarding activities, or changes to W2s, you know, all this stuff that other places have. So to maintain some continuity with Lauer Bachman, who are engaging our financial services with, staff is recommending using their service. And if you have any questions on the software in particular, I think Tim can answer any detailed questions.
But, so we, we have no choice, though. We have to do something here.
We have to, we have to do something. So Chris sent me the first letter, and originally, they were only looking at one, and I said, go look at two. And, you know, even if you just get a bit, and apparently, it was interesting enough to spend another hour looking at it.
Yeah.
So they really did look at a second. But, you know, payroll is a calendar year, so it really makes a ton of sense to get this approved tonight, so they can actually pull that switch January 1st.
Tim can do it, right? We're cutting it close. So, I mean, this will be an upgrade to what we have now, right?
Yep.
Yes.
And, I think...
Everybody remember when Lustbeck left?
Yes.
Yes, this will be tracking things like that.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So I'll move to approve.
Second.
Let me, there's a live, there's a question, but there's a live motion. So moved by Trustee Borowski, seconded by Trustee Chris Meyer. Roll call, please. Trustee Chris Meyer.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Motion carried. Benjamin.
My question is, will the change allow village employees, then they have these modern services like you were mentioning, online, because they're W2s and all that? And will the cost be significantly more than the current vendor that you're using?
It's more money, but not out of the realm of...
Right now, the vendor is, it's baked in with the regular kind of books we've been, so it's not separated out. Well, part of it, QuickBooks is separate out, but the actual labor is not separated out, so it's additional labor, but it also comes with additional value.
So, yeah, so what was it, the difference here? Was it, QuickBooks was $180 per month?
We pay them like $2,000 per month for...
Plus some portion of the labor, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus we pay some, yeah, so it's kind of a, I guess, a wash, right?
And this will go up to about...
Probably a little more than that.
$9,000 versus...
Or there's a two comparison, the two options. So it'll go up 5,000?
The 2,000 amounts to Sidler is not just payroll.
Got it, okay.
Not just payroll.
It's like co-mingled with everything.
Got it. So like a $5,000 increase for this.
Sidler hasn't raised a rate in multiple years.
Yeah.
And he says that he can't sustain that anymore.
I do agree with him, because, I mean, when you traced the last time, it hadn't been raised in like three or four years either.
Moving on, discussion and consideration of resolution approving renewal of the public relations and marketing, communication services, services with Wisdom Bridge Marketing. Any discussion?
Are they, do they have the latitude to do what we really shouldn't have done?
Sure.
Well, I saw, I read it, I assume I read everything, because I did. They're doing all, they're doing all of that. I mean, are they, are they feeling, are they able to actually work independently and kind of give us a good communication?
Yeah, so we're working on better internal task force communications.
Okay.
That started, Dan and I are now much more involved in the progress coming up. Yeah.
I was hoping Jack might be here tonight. I wanted to ask him. You have those, at Christmas time in certain communities, you can give a charitable donation. Think they call them giving machines? But the community, the community has to kind of deserve it, to have that kind of a thing. People want to donate this time of year, and they don't know who to donate to, so they have these machines, where you just hit the buttons and put your credit card in and take care of the donation.
Like a physical pen?
Yeah, yeah, and it, it's, you know, the shopping time and the day after, like giving and all that, they get a lot of money for charity. I just was curious if Jack has experienced that in some of the other communities where he works, and if we would qualify for something.
And he'll watch this video.
Shoot him an email, yeah.
If anyone has anything they want to see more of or differently, you know, provide me feedback.
I would just love, I would love to see, you know, continued good communication, I think, you know, otherwise, if we, if we don't participate in the conversation, it will happen without us, and we can use the word control, it's hard to really control it, but if we don't participate, we don't have any way to shape. And I think it's important that the facts that come out of this government are part of the conversation.
Yep, I know Jack watches all these meetings, and he'll listen to your comments and try and incorporate things when he can, but...
It'd be nice if, you know, shredding events and budgeting and community building sorts of things that counts, too.
That's not Jack's job, though.
That's not Jack's job. It's his job to communicate, not do.
But I think he has suggested things like that.
Chris, did you have a comment, or you had a frown on your face, I wasn't sure.
This, Chris?
That, you, Chris, yes.
No, my question, just maybe a question.
Get you, Ryan.
I'm wondering about goals, and what's different this year than last year? What, you know, what's the incremental improvements that we're specifically asking his organization, him, to do? I guess I don't know who sets those goals or what they are, or should we have them? You know, i.e., how many, how many internet touchpoints do we currently have, and what's our aim for him to improve touchpoints or connections or follower links or whatever the right, okay, or this? I guess, you know, what are we trying to accomplish, or what do we want him to focus on? So right now, the way this is kind of written, it's, you know, it's talking about the various different social media platforms, but, you know, what's a priority for him or us? And what do we want him to accomplish? What age demographic does he want him to reach? Do we want him to reach? Or what are our promotion activities with the downtown and non-downtown business owners?
Would you like a quarterly dashboard of results? Because asking for goals without measuring anything is...
Well, that's, okay, so I didn't want to sound like the guy who should have maybe checked the Google Drive and maybe got the data.
You do, but you want to sound like that guy, but... Because he has, yeah, he has provided a report once a month. There is a report that has those numbers, and it is tough, because he does provide, you know, statistical report, but a lot of the way talking about it, you know, is nonsensical, anecdotal, you know, narrative, so you have to weigh on both, but there are those, you know, quantifiable things, what part of it is society, you know, what do you want those goals to be, and we haven't necessarily done that in the past, but we can do that, you know, going forward.
So who's job is it to give him those goals or targets? Like, have you guys approached him and said, "Hey, this year, we want you guys to..."
It would be Chris's, he's the CEO.
Yeah, I have not given him the numbers that we want, because that's hard to... I mean, I will say we do have a 70% open rate for our newsletter, which is very high.
That's astonishing in commercial work. I'd like a story on what Brian talked about earlier.
You know, Jack has to reach out more, so we're giving him more information as he has about what's going on downtown. That helps everyone see what's happening. So we will... if we want to do a monthly coordination where we can actually give, sit down with him and give him information, whether it's phone or in person, and just do highlights of what's going on, because as we continue out, you know, month by month, there is a lot of activities going, and we've got a lot more excitement with stores and businesses. I think that that will help create content, which you can justify too, because you'll overrate everything. Chris, if you could see that overrate...
Well, but it depends on the audience, too. I mean, if the open rate to Long Grove residents who are fairly well-invested in the community is high, I'd kind of expect it to be, but I guess what's the open rate of pinging people that we want to attract to the village? For whatever reason, whether it be, you know, business purchases or buying houses, right?
Any commercial thing, if it's not targeted, like fractions of a percent.
I... trust me, I know. I get it, I get it. Trust me, I know. I mean, the date and time, the time that you send emails influences the open rate. I get that.
We try to work with you guys, so that when he shares something, we're sharing as well, so we can also get our exposure to, you know, 20,000-plus people that see us and activities, and we're constantly trying to cancel our activities, so we can keep on expanding the brand as well.
Yeah, I applaud that. I think they should be integrated. We should not be parallel play, we should be...
Well, I want to expand on that a little bit more, though, but the downtown business owners aren't the only business owners, so how do we include the other ones?
Hundred percent like...
So we've been doing some business spotlights of different businesses, and we're choosing different, the business districts in town. So we're highlighting, we're not just focusing on just the downtown, we want to make sure that we're exposing, like Sorrel is a new business, we have Long Grove Commons, Dunkin' Donuts right there, too. There's certainly Sunset Foods in that plaza that has a lot of businesses. So Jack is actively... not everyone wants to talk to us, but people that do, we're actively working with to promote and give a shout-out to, I mean, if we can get more people visiting those businesses, that helps us.
I wonder...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, just to kind of wrap that, wrap up my thoughts. So it sounds like you guys have some great ideas, collaboration's really good, engaging the entire village is really good, but is there like a summary report of what your goals are for Jack, and what the metrics are that we're gonna measure him on? And do we get that periodically said to us, beside the Dana report, which I should be looking at?
That's the main thing that we give, what else do you want?
Well, look, what I want is somebody who knows how to reach people and what our goals are, right? Chris Borowski isn't that guy, man, I'm worried about cats puking in the back of my car. That's what I'm good at, right? But who is good at setting marketing metrics for the Village along Grove? I guess that's the CEO question, and maybe...
Well, so, I mean, Bobby Tech... Bobby has technical oversight of communications, too, Trustee O'Connor, she's not here tonight. I will say, one thing that's happened here is this is one that Chris has inherited amongst a lot of other things that are going on, so is there some refinement, in my opinion, that can be done here? To your point, some specific goals, that should be worked on for this coming year, and I think now you might have some bandwidth, maybe a little bit more, to do that, right? So...
I think that would be great, and, you know, I would also... what he has proposed probably doesn't contemplate a weekly owner's ginormous dashboard in his scope of work, so there might be some coming to...
Yeah, my priority is getting our 12 monthly e-newsletters out, our four quarterly print letters that go out, and then some promotion on our social media and webpages, and interacting with the businesses and marketing that.
As we head into next budget year, has anybody contemplated resurrecting the old Long Grove calendar that we used to send out to all the residents?
I'll put that on the... when we call for budgets, new things to do.
It's all things to do, actually.
I still remember it, so...
Yeah.
We talked about rebranding, marketing purposes, and should we, should we get a G E going? Should we ask, ask our, the people we're working with who understand who we are? You know, it'd be nice to have, like, Batavia just, we just had a thing on, in the Daily Herald, Batavia's slogan is, "You belong here." You know, and it's like, like that, you know? That's, we, we could use something like that.
Yeah, maybe, you know, something, something a little more 2025 than years in the bridge, you know?
Not, not that the, the bridge is, is, you know, our thing, but it's updated.
Yeah, I know Jack has worked on a, like, uniquely Long Grove segment that he's been trying out. I think it's pictured on there a little bit. But, yeah, there's things we could do. The whole rebranding thing, I, I mean, now that I'm getting more and more things...
But also, to what goal? What end, right? I mean, is it...
Put money in the budget for that, though.
No, we didn't.
Didn't, we didn't get that in?
We talked about it.
We talked about it.
Okay, we pushed it, okay. Too many projects.
It wasn't so much a budget thing, it's a bandwidth.
Too many projects.
We've got a village hall, we've got Lake Michigan water.
The spinning plates, we're just been catching them and not letting them drop, right?
Exactly, exactly.
That's why this is important, to make sure we get this done, too. We don't need to spin up another project, right?
Yeah. Just, just an idea, and that was... you had difficulty, we talked about Christmas lights, not just downtown, you know, and making sure that's in the budget, whatever. Is there, is there a backwards way to do a story on how beautiful the downtown one looks that would get the other, the areas interested next year?
Yeah.
So we need a motion here to approve this agreement with...
We need a motion to...
Wisdom Bridge?
A resolution approving renewal of the public relations and marketing campaign services with Wisdom Bridge Marketing.
I'll make that one.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Borowski, seconded by Trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. What you've been waiting for is the Village Engineers report.
All right.
Doesn't get any more exciting than that.
I know, right?
Yes.
Thank you for that. All right, we got the Village Engineers report, got a few things to highlight tonight. First thing, the village hall expansion, work is underway. Last week, we were treated to the sound of hammers while we were trying to have a coordination meeting in this room, but the shingle is done, next is the siding and doors, so that they can just match with that feel there, so they can move forward and progress with the interior work. Number two, the 2025 road maintenance program, village manager and I have been talking about and drove roads for what we included for next year. I did draft the memo, it was listed on the engineers' report, but we wanted to make a few adjustments to that, and instead of just giving fresh information today at board meeting, we decided that we just defer that discussion until January 14.
There's some pathways.
We need to have a meeting, so I think we'll coordinate.
You have oversight for roads, yeah.
Pathways.
Oh, pathways, too. Oh, you were talking pathways, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We took several drives. But we have to...
Trustee O'Connor was jealous she missed out on the drive with the village manager laying off the roads.
I was wondering about that.
I think that's what was going on there.
It's okay, I'll remember.
Doesn't get more exciting than that. All right. Number five, the Lake Michigan Water Connection. The village has submitted the draft IDA to Buffalo Grove a few weeks ago. Buffalo Grove reviewed it and did send back their comments, still kind of under review and discussion, but more on that at a later time. Is there?
Yes, Vic is reviewing their proposed changes from the legal side. There, it was fairly minor, but a few things that caught our attention, so we just wanted to close off before sending back.
There's a question about the water. Is the congressional funding 100% guaranteed, even in the face of cost-cutting measures next year?
I believe so.
I believe so, too, but 100% guaranteed when the check is received.
Oh, yeah. That would be...
Yes.
But it's not subject to cost-cutting?
No. Obviously, anything like that.
It's in, all right.
Right. Jumping down, just a couple of updates on the county projects. Are there any roads related to where it's going to be for the winter?
That's really bad news.
Yeah, all the cars are on the east side, one lane each way.
And the, the traffic light sequencing is terrible.
Which one? You're talking the angry...
I could spend four minutes waiting for that light, just to get on my own truck.
Okay.
So that switch over is like a few weeks ago, then, right?
Right.
Because it was on both sides?
Yeah, well...
Because I was through there a few weeks ago.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
So I'll ask the county to...
It doesn't seem...
There's much they can do since it's so reduced to one lane each way.
Is Gaywell, it's a side note, is Gaywell at all involved in the Deer, the Deerfield Parkway?
Not entirely sure.
Okay.
I can check with my transportation department.
You know, it goes down through the middle of Buffalo Grove, that's down to one lane on each side. There's, it's completely flopped off, and there seems no evidence of actual work, construction. There was a terrible accident there Sunday night, so...
Okay, I'll look into that and I'll let you know.
Yeah, was that Deerfield and Buffalo Grove was, that section was where the crash was?
Okay.
What time was that?
This was on a quiet, around 7:00 P.M.
Oh, really? Because, yeah, because I came to the village hall...
About 3:00.
When I got off the airplane, but I didn't go that way, I went down Lake Hook Road 83.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Well, I don't know about you, but like my G I S things are taking me away from that road. Either somebody go like Hook or 22.
Got it, yeah.
On the, on the, after your note, Aptikissick Road, so once you get through the congestion of Arlington Heights Road, you get to Aptikissick Road, it's smooth sailing there, that work is done. There's a few odds and ends there, but...
What does it, what does it make so much noise when you drive on the pavement?
[laughing].
What road? Aptikissick. When you dr- I mean, it's like a humming noise in your tires, right? You know what I'm talking about?
Do you have mud tires?
No, I don't have big tires. Steve knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I don't suck at mine.
Okay, you don't know that, all right. I don't...
Yeah, I don't know that.
Does it grooze in it, or something? Oh, weird.
No, it's...
Okay, never mind, forget it, just keep going.
Yeah, break it in, yeah. Yeah, that would be my response, just to get broken a little bit. Um, okay, jumping down, I know there's quite a few permits on here, actually closed down about eight of them earlier today, so that's good. Seal of Long Grove, they did get the high load on of the native area around the perimeter site. I did ask the question of, according to your contractor, what do you think the progress is? And response was, "Slow." So I thought about that a little bit, I don't think that's quite surprising, since it was neglected for so long, they're still in the catch-up phase. So McGinty Brothers is under contract for two more years to shepherd that to healthy native area, so when spring comes, I know they're gonna be doing a collective mow and roadside treatment, so...
What about a burn?
That is next fall, I believe.
I'm here in the spring.
They don't have to spring, they don't have to be, yeah.
Yeah, but why don't I get a jump on it? Cutting it down isn't gonna do any good, do a burn. I've been...
Cat puke, that's all I know.
For three...
Tree Darber is not a tree professor.
Three years after Ginny left, because she was on it. That's what it, that's what it needs.
I can, I can suggest it to, you know, speaking for forums, same thing?
We should have, we should have never been, you know, we had 75,000, we needed 20,000. Done nothing.
So those are the updates I had for tonight?
All right.
Sorry about Iowa State. At least they're bad smoking.
George, you had a question?
We're all getting hot tarts on December 12.
The pylons were taken down in Long Grove.
Yeah.
And I'm curious if the previous behavior has returned.
Yeah, yeah.
So does that beg the question, should the road be modified so that permanent obstruction be constructed? And should that be considered for next year's budget?
Some look at it.
We're discussing.
Yeah. Well, the pile of the leak, place that carefully, it's not... but, yeah, you're stuck in six months... Yeah, well, we're talking about it, yeah, about the year solution. And would you say that the speed tables, or what I call them, just becomes some checker road, have been really a benefit?
Yeah, I think they're, they're a benefit when they're in place. Are you saying, you know, now that they're not in place, what the electronic message or electronic speed radars collect, so...
So if there is a benefit, maybe that's another thing you want to change in the budget for next year, that, and not just a hunk, something that's truly a progressive-type speed table that really... interesting, so you don't have to have the issue with the slow pulse in the litter, but it's gonna gradual raise and long and then drop in.
George wants to move back to Long Grove.
Yeah.
Checker is...
I don't want to be on the board. I'm just doing it.
You want to be back on the board, come on.
Yeah, the village manager and I, we have talked about, you know, the speed tables and, you know, what surrounds that, discuss it as well.
That is it, Norway, I saw, that has these adjustable speed, speed humps that automatically adjust based on vehicle speed. Have you seen those? They, if the car's going faster and faster, these things crank up more and more. So if you're doing 30 miles an hour or 25, they don't, they don't come up at all, but if you, if you start to speed up, so do they. They're pretty cool. At what point does it raise them?
Where's the wall?
Well, as soon as you lose your car, or your tires make wobbly noises, you know?
Why does that sound like Bugs Bunny, you know?
No, it's really true, it's really cool. So I think it was...
It has to go around your short drive, you know, when it starts to flow, it'll come up some, you know? I'm sure that's a chunk of change.
I know it is, but it's pretty cool, though, because it's automatically activated, so people who do follow the law don't have to sit there and screw around with, you know?
Right, yeah.
For Chris, it'll just go flat, right?
Or it'll sound like your tires, you know?
Yes. All right, so keeping us moving, village president and trustee reports. I did participate last Friday in the Lake Zurich Chamber breakfast, you know, with the other mayors there, so I did talk about the Mario Lopez movie, too, that was in my talk, so, just so you know.
Is Dominic there?
Dominic was there, yes, yes. He said he's gonna give you the money quickly, so, yeah. No, he didn't say that.
Oh, I believed you.
Yeah. Let's see, Trustee Borowski, want to talk trash?
I'm not sure if I want to talk trash, maybe Chris does, but I do want to mention SWALCO has canceled their January meeting, and the next SWALCO board meeting will be held in April. I'm not sure of the reason for the cancellation, so it's a four-to-five-month third of SWALCO. I don't know. Trash?
Yeah, so we had a, our RFPs were due last week, we had three companies respond, all who we were expecting waste management.
Does everyone know that our waste management contract expires at the end of March of next year? Yeah, so that's, so we, go ahead, keep going, just want to make sure everyone knew.
We went out to RFP, we had three firms respond, Waste Management and Groot and LRS, and there was a very wide swing of prices.
You feel they were all answering the same scope?
Yes, well, we confirm. So Groot was a little bitter and it actually would represent a cost decrease to the residents quite a bit, so it's, we wanted to make sure that they meant what they said when they gave their proposals and they're honoring it, so.
I got my attention last night, though.
Yeah. There was an Arlington Heights incident.
It was Arlington Heights, yeah, they had a garbage truck explode last night, so that was interesting.
It was an isolated incident, we'll find out. Um, so I'll provide formal numbers and, uh, for you guys to look at.
Did you see that garbage truck? It's a Groot truck.
Is that trying to zoom in on?
Go ahead, Benjamin.
Um, for the garbage project, will there be a sticker discount from any providers?
Yeah, so the, the, right now it's 10% and Groot proposed a 15% discount. The garbage day would switch to Mondays from the current day, village-wide, should be a change, but Mondays are probably the best day after weekend when you're all full, so.
Just the same, you're cut off to age, but...
Ooh. Might be like 65, I have to look.
They have same size cans?
Same size cans, yes.
Is recycling been the same? I thought we had to downsize recycling.
Their default is 65, but they'll do, you can have the same size, yeah, 95, so we'd have to get all the data from Waste Management to make sure they probably allow residents to have an option of the size you want, otherwise you'd get your current sizing.
Waste Management had that little penny that you had electronics or bulky things and you sold them, you had to put them out, which are trash, does Groot offer that?
Um, yes, and I don't even know if you need to call, I think you get up to five items per week. I'd have to verify, I'd have to look at that, though.
So what, all those sofas and, you know, just water heaters, uh...
I bet you'll get all the stuff to read at some point.
It has to be under 50, under 50 pounds.
Oh, okay, I bet you get all the stuff to read at some point.
Coordination, but they also...
Get a whole item, yeah.
Yeah, but it's just after you sign the contract, you know, like...
So I'll write a memo with more detail on it all, but overall, it's good news, Waste Management came in a 35% increase.
Yeah, but that's interesting, very little has, you know, once it goes up, it rarely comes down, so.
Yeah, this would take, this would take five years to get back to our current rate.
I think those are the comments, I, I think Groot's a great, a great company, I think they have, I, if we looked into, are their trucks any bigger than Waste Management trucks? Because like our, in our cul-de-sacs, you know, I mean, like, a lot of our, a lot of our damage in our smaller cul-de-sacs are from the garbage trucks, you know, Waste Management throughout the years, because they can't make the turns because they're too shut. So, I mean, I would just, you know, those homeowners might have to put their garbage, you know, at the neck of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so, you know, that might be something that Groot would have to come out and, you know, on a street-to-street basis, you know?
Yeah, I think they drove the town before they submitted, but I know they were going to do it again because they want to see the current state of all the cans that are out, too. That's another big hurdle is acquiring that many cans to replace with in a couple of months, so.
Only so that we...
Benjamin, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry for a trudge, but I'm just, I was just, you know, you were saying, I, I live in a subdivision where, um, we have a private road and it only goes a quarter mile down, has a gravel road. Right now, Waste Management backs their trucks down that road.
Quarter mile.
Yeah, so I, we want to make sure, like, in my subdivision, that the new company will be doing the same thing, because we don't want to, you know, drag our vans all the way up to Highway 22 and so that they understand what Waste Management currently does.
Yeah, our expectation would be the same level of service that you're getting now.
Yeah, but they probably should maybe check out some of the odd subdivisions like mine that were created in different ways, or like a better word, so they understand.
End of report.
Good job, Chris, you did a very good job on that report. Trustee Kritzmeyer. Uh, trustee O'Connor.
No report, because I didn't get to ride along.
Trustee Tanucci.
No report.
Uh, is there any other village manager reports?
I'll just add that a while back I mentioned that we were trying to have GPS companies that route cars to have them not go through the bridge and to have that be local traffic only, so Google and Waze, which Google owns, accommodated that and it is local traffic only. Apple refused our request, so we did engage with Congressman Quigley's office and they have outreach to their congressional, um, Apple person there, so in and out, they were, they took that right away and went to them and are waiting for a response, so we'll see if there's anything they can do, but.
Man, that's a crap load of bureaucracy to flip a little software switch.
Yep, it's crazy.
Yeah, but, you know, the whole thing is like a double legged soap, you know, you want people coming down, don't want them down, you just don't move their trucks.
Big truck.
And they can't, the, the app won't discriminate for us to do.
But even Waze and Google Maps, it's in and out, in and out, in and out, you just have to, I don't get...
Have to check it monthly, check it monthly, half a...
Okay, so, um, I'm just going to start by saying happy holidays to everyone, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday, we're gonna, we'll see everyone next year. Um, I would look for a motion to adjourn.